Good evening and welcome to tonight's hearings. The hearings being conducted are in accordance with provisions of Nebraska statutes which require the governing bodies to conduct public hearings that take and take input regarding proposed budgets and property tax requests pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen, twelve of the Nebraska statutes. The public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is published in the board meeting room on the north wall. Tonight's hearing, notice of tonight's hearings was published in accordance with law in the daily record on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the district website on August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. As indicated on the agenda, there are three hearings this evening regarding the proposed two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budgets and property tax requests. The Board of Education welcomes public input concerning the proposed budgets and the property tax request. Requests to be heard forms are available at the table by the door, and members of the public wishing to comment on the proposed budget and property tax requests may fill out a form now if they have not already done so. Completed forms shall be, should be returned to staff seated by the door or to Dr. McFarland, who is the Secretary of the Board of Education. The public will be recognized in numeric order by the hearing number as shown on the agenda. The President will call upon visitors to listen to speak according with the hearing number indicated below and the number placed at the top of the request to be heard for them once it's returned to staff by the door. The Board respectfully asks that you limit your presentation to five minutes so all may have the opportunity to speak. The Secretary of the Board will notify you when you have one minute remaining, when you have thirty seconds remaining. As a reminder, with the passage of L B eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board of Education to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent. As a result, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are representing any particular organization before beginning your comment. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let Dr. McFarland know and she will come get them from you. Written comments are always also welcome. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Full. Here. Head.
Present.
Holman. Juarez. Cracky. Smith. Tealyn. Seven present.
Thank you. This evening, Mr. Shane Ryan will be presenting information on the proposed budgets and property tax requests for Douglas County School District zero, 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 one and Education Service Unit number nineteen. Information regarding the budgets has been posted on the meeting's online agenda and the website, and on the district's website and at openbook dot O P S dot org. The Board of Education may make additional changes or modifications to the proposed budgets and the property tax requests between now and the required adoption, currently scheduled for the regular board meeting this evening, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Moving to item C one, the presentation of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five proposed budget for school, Douglas County School District zero, 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 one, and the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five property tax requirements and proposed budget for Education Service Unit number nineteen. Mr. Ryan.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Ray. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Tonight, I am presenting the proposed budget and property tax request for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. The one point two-two billion dollar budget is comprised of the General Fund and twelve other funds. I will be focusing my remarks this evening on the four primary funds that comprise the district's property tax levy, the General Fund, the Bond Fund, the Special Building Fund, and the Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund. The proposed budget is the culmination of a process that began last December. In the initial stages, staff developed a high-level budget, identified areas for investment, and analyzed specific areas of spending to ensure adequate funding for key initiatives. Following that process, detailed department and program level budgets were developed in collaboration with leadership throughout the district. It goes without saying, but it takes a skilled and dedicated team to develop a responsible and disciplined budget such as we have this year. I would like to thank everyone in the district who participated in the budget process this year, especially our Budget Director, Kristi Rukowski. Ms. Rukowski led a district-wide process that delivers on the district's commitment to our students, staff, and community. Other key contributors from the finance team include Cindy Misrae, Controller, and Brian Klein, Financial Planning and Analysis Manager. Valuable feedback was received during the preparation of the budget from the Board's Budget Nautic Committee chaired by Mr. Head, Mr. Ray, and the Executive Council and their leadership teams. This presentation includes information previously presented to the Budget Nautic Committee members over the last several months, as well as detailed small group budget workshops that were held with all board members at the end of July. Highlights from the proposed budget include true property tax relief while maximizing the amount of property tax revenue allowed by state statute, and significant increases for staff salaries and benefits. The combined property tax request for twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five for the four levy funds for the Omaha Public Schools and the Educational Service Unit number nineteen is eight million dollars less than the previous year. This reduction in property tax revenue will result in a ten point nine cent decrease in the combined levy. The proposed budget includes a board override of the L B two forty-three revenue caps, providing an additional four percent increase in overall revenues for the General Fund and Special Building Fund for the district. The proposed budget demonstrates the Board's commitment to the district's most valuable resource, its staff. One hundred percent of the overall General Fund budget increase is going to staff salaries and benefits, which has had a direct and immediate impact on ongoing staff recruitment and retention efforts. The Nebraska Legislature passed L B two forty-three in two thousand and twenty-three, and it was signed into law by Governor Pillen. L B two forty-three imposes a cap on the amount that revenue can increase for school districts, general funds, and special building funds. The base revenue cap for all school districts is a three percent increase, with additional allowances provided for growth in total student membership, limited English proficiency student membership, and student poverty. L B two forty-three also provides an option for an additional four percent increase in revenues for a school district of our size with the passage of a resolution by a seventy percent supermajority of the Board of Education. The Nebraska Department of Education calculates a certified property tax request authority for all school districts based on L B two forty-three. This year, the district's base certified property tax request authority, including student growth allowances, is two hundred ninety-two point nine million dollars, a decrease of forty point four million dollars from last year. This reduction is primarily attributable to a thirty-one point seven million dollar increase in state aid and a nine point one million dollar increase in other state receipts. The four percent board override provision allows for an additional twenty-seven point nine million dollars to be added to the property tax request. The proposed budget includes a request for the Board to pass a resolution to levy for the additional four percent revenue increase. This budget and resolution would provide for a total increase in revenues for the General Fund and Special Building Fund of thirty point seven million dollars or a four point one eight percent increase from the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Without this board override, total revenue growth would be two point eight million dollars or zero point three nine percent. The Board has made many adjustments to staff compensation over the last three years to recognize our most valuable resource, our staff. This has been an important effort to attract and retain talented staff in all areas of our school district, and these adjustments have had a direct impact on these efforts. The Board approved supplemental retention stipends for all staff for the last two years out of the federal elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief, or E S R, funds awarded during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Knowing the availability of these funds were ending at the end of this month, September, two thousand and twenty-four, the Board approved negotiated agreements with our many labor partners that included building these stipends into the base pay scales. This was a very important action, as it would have been extremely detrimental to our staff if their pay were actually reduced from the amounts in the prior two years. Additionally, the Board adjusted existing negotiated agreements to provide additional compensation for special education teachers and paras, as well as teachers with advanced degrees. This additional compensation for our most experienced teachers places our wages at or near the top of a very competitive labor market in the Omaha metropolitan area. These increases in compensation have had a direct and immediate impact on the district's recruitment and retention efforts, and as a result, our district is beginning the year with one hundred seventy-one more teachers than at the beginning of last year. This slide shows the major components of expenses for the district and compares the proposed budget to last year's budget. The proposed General Fund expense budget is eight hundred twelve million dollars, which is an increase of eighty-five million dollars or eleven point six nine percent. Salaries and benefits are increasing eighty-six point three million dollars due to the increases in staff compensation rates and adding additional teachers to the payroll. The increase in salaries and benefits is over one hundred percent of the total General Fund budget increase, reflecting our commitment to our staff. The district's actuarial, actuarial required contribution or A R C payment to the Omaha School Employees Retirement System, or O S Rs, is projected to increase significantly over the next five years, with the A R C payment for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five projected to be thirty-nine point six million dollars, five point one million dollars more than last year's budget. This increase is due to revised assumptions for the actuarial valuation previously approved by the Board and significant negative returns on O S R plan assets during calendar year two thousand and twenty-two that are still being recognized on an actuarial basis. Contracted services are increasing by three point seven million dollars. This increase is primarily due to the new contract for student transportation and increases in insurance rates for the district, something being felt by other school districts nationally. Supplies and materials are increasing by two point five million dollars. This increase is primarily due to the inflationary pressures of the last two years that we have all felt. The decrease in equipment and other costs is due to a decrease in the district's contingency budget and the elimination of inter-fund transfers. With the increased staffing levels, less contingency is needed for mid-year hires, and any necessary year-end fund transfers will be made from budget favorability at that time. The total personnel costs in the General Fund budget are six hundred fifty-seven million dollars or eighty point nine one percent of the total budget of eight hundred and twelve million dollars. The remaining nineteen point zero nine percent of the total budget, one hundred and fifty-five million dollars, is for all other expenditure categories. This ratio of personnel cost to other costs is in the normal range for most school district budgets. Building a responsible and effective budget is about maintaining balance and ensuring proposed spending is in line with expected revenues. District revenues are received from three main sources: property taxes and other local receipts, state receipts, and cash reserves. The amounts presented do not include one hundred and fifty million dollars separately budgeted for federal, state, local, and philanthropic grants to the district. As you can see from the pie chart on the left side of this slide, approximately forty-five percent of the General Fund revenues are from property taxes and other local sources. Forty-eight percent is from state sources, and seven percent is from cash reserves. On the pie chart on the right side of this slide, personal services, including salaries and benefits and the A R C payment, are the largest category of expenses in the proposed budget, comprising eighty-one percent of total General Fund spending. District staff truly are our most valuable resource, with over ninety percent of the staff throughout the district classroom and student-facing. The remaining expenses in the budget fall into three other broad categories: contracted and purchased services at fourteen percent, supplies and materials at three percent, and equipment and other costs at two percent. Revenues and expenses must be in balance. Reserves are used from time to time to supplement available revenue sources. Board policy stipulates that the unassigned General Fund reserve balance must be maintained between ten to twenty percent of the prior year's expenses. When the reserve balance is greater than twenty percent for two consecutive years, board policy requires that the excess amount be utilized for one-time projects in the third year's budget. With the use of available reserves in this year's budget, we anticipate finishing the year at or just below the twenty percent maximum level. Having a fund balance at the higher end of the policy range provides the district financial security and flexibility. Having a healthy fund balance will help ensure that the district can continue significant initiatives originally begun with E S R funding, such as one-to-one student devices and cellular connectivity, increased compensation for staff, and maintaining regular curriculum updates. It also allows the district to weather financial uncertainty with state and local revenue sources that may be caused by unforeseen adverse economic conditions, such as those caused by the pandemic and the current inflationary cycle we have all been experiencing. This slide shows the property tax request for each of the four levable funds. The table on the left compares this year's tax requests to last year's. For two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, the total property tax request is three hundred eighty-one point two million dollars. This amount includes the Douglas and Sarpy County Treasurers' one percent commission. This tax request in tot, this tax request results in a total levy rate of one dollar and ten point eight cents. This is a decrease in the levy of ten point nine cents from the previous year. The total levy request is comprised of four separate components: the General Fund levy of eighty-nine point two-three-five cents, a decrease of eight point four-zero-nine cents; the Special Building Fund levy of three cents, a decrease of two point five cents. The Special Building Fund is used principally to acquire or improve sites and to erect, alter, or improve buildings. It is important to note that this fund did not have a separate property tax levy for several years prior to two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. This year's levy is a continuation of the ongoing process to fund current building maintenance and improvement needs. The Bond Fund levy is sixteen point three zero eight cents unchanged from last year. This fund is used to make principal and interest payments on the district's outstanding general obligation bonds. The Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund levy is one point two five cents unchanged from last year. This fund is used to make principal and interest payments for limited obligation bonds issued for past work related to health and safety modifications in our schools. This work included activities such as fire alarm replacements and environmental remediation. The chart on the right shows the district's recent levy history. The district has lowered the levy in six of the last seven years. In three of the four years where there was a levy increase, that increase was the result of increases in the Bond Fund levy to make required principal and interest payments for voter-approved bond initiatives in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen. This history shows that the district has been responsible with its tax request over the last ten years and reduced the levy when prudent. It also shows that the revenue caps implemented with the passage of L B two forty-three are working as intended. This slide shows the proposed combined revenue expense budgets for all four of the district's levy funds. Proposed revenues and expenses are budgeted to be eight hundred ninety-eight million dollars. This slide does not include one hundred and fifty million dollars in federal, state, local, and philanthropic grant activities for the year. The revenue sources are presented in the pie chart on the left side of the slide. As you can see, property taxes and state receipts account for most of the district's resources. Expenses are presented in the chart on the right side of the slide and include the General Fund budget of eight hundred and twelve million dollars, ninety percent of the total budget; the Bond Fund budget of fifty-three point nine million dollars, six percent of the total, for principal and interest payments of general obligation bonds; the Special Building Fund budget of twenty-eight point eight million dollars, three percent of the total. This includes building-related projects funded by remaining bond proceeds and other maintenance and improvement projects funded by the levy; and finally, the Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund budget of five point three million dollars for principal and interest payments on limited obligation bonds. This slide presents the proportionate share of total revenues of the four levy funds by sources on the left, as well as the proportionate share of the property tax revenues on the right. The purpose of this slide is to show that less than half the district's revenues for these funds come from property taxes and to show a breakdown of those levy revenues for each of the four individual funds. This evening, we are also presenting the budget and property tax request for Educational Service Unit number nineteen. E S U nineteen provides professional development for staff, technology services and support, and printing and publication services across the district. The left side of the slide shows the proposed property tax request and the levy for E S U nineteen. Nebraska provides a separate Nebraska provides a separate statutory levy rate for educational service units of up to $0.15, and the proposed levy for ESU 19 is unchanged from the prior year. Revenues and expenses for the ESU on the right side of the slide are each increasing by $6.2 million to $29.6 million. Revenues for the ESU are increasing in all categories. State aid for core services is increasing by $163,000. Property tax receipts are increasing $356,000 or 7.49% due to the increase in certified valuations by the Douglas and Sarpy County assessors. The increase in other local receipts of $1.7 million or 12.3% is primarily due to increased payments from the district to the ESU for services provided by the ESU. New revenues of $1 million in state grant receipts for school safety measures from a new grant program. Available ESU 19 reserves of $4.8 million will be used, if needed, to balance the budget. As covered in the district's general fund discussion, the $2.3 million increase in salaries and benefits in ESU 19 is due to the overall increases in staff compensation. Contracted services are increasing $2.6 million due to increases in costs for technological support for hardware and software for the district and the initial steps in replacing the district's finance and human resources software system. Supplies and materials are increasing $195,000 primarily due to inflationary pressures, and equipment and other costs are increasing $1.1 million due to the $1 million from the new state grant program for school safety and inflationary pressures on in- on equipment The final item I would like to share with you this evening is the most recent five-year financial projection for the district's general fund. This information is presented in conjunction with the budget each year. It is important that the district always plan for the future and has visibility for any potential financial challenges that may exist. The sooner any challenges are visible, the better positioned the district will be to plan for and weather those changes. The financial planning and analysis team frequently updates its modeling and projections throughout the year. As forecasts are prepared, assumptions are challenged and updated, and the outlook modified for anticipated changes in economic conditions and potential legislative action. Having an eye to the future better positions the district to address challenges in both the short and long term. This allows the district to better utilize resources, anticipate issues, and resolve challenges over a longer period of time. None of the amounts on this page will be perfectly accurate over the next five years. However, the modeling behind these numbers shows trends and directional changes that can be expected over the next five years based on current assumptions. Long-term forecasting enables the district to plan for the future based on model changes to revenues and expenses. The first columns present actual results for school years 2021-22 and 2022-23, as well as projected final results for 2023-24. The remaining columns present the long-term financial forecast over the next five years that is expected based on current assumptions. Instead of focusing on the individual revenue and expense components, it is more valuable to focus on the projected unassigned fund balance at the bottom of the page. As you can see, the beginning fund balance for the proposed budget is projected to be 20% at the end of 2023-24. The forecasts also show reserves will remain at the board maximum at the end of 2024-25, with the reserve balance beginning to decline over the following four years of this projection. This forecast shows us that it will be challenging to absorb the costs that have been paid for with ESER funds for the last three years. The forecast indicates that continuation of these services in the general fund budget will likely require some amount of offsetting reductions of expenses in the future through careful and thoughtful planning and consideration. Over the course of many years, the district has long added initiatives without successfully sunsetting ones that are no longer aligned to our improvement as a school district or delivering the results we expect to see for our students. The district will need to continue to work on pursuing process improvement and implementing operational efficiencies. We will also need to continue to work to identify ways to utilize our available resources more effectively and efficiently. This five-year forecast is not a once-a-year project. The district's finances are reforecasted frequently during the year, and we are always looking towards the future. As I mentioned earlier, the sooner potential issues can be identified, the longer the timeframe available to address them. Planning for the future ensures that the district will have the necessary resources available to serve its students, staff, and community. In summary, the proposed budget for 2024-25 demonstrates the board's commitment to our district's most valuable resource, staff. 100% of the general fund budget increase is going to staff salaries and benefits, which has had a direct and immediate impact on our ongoing staff recruitment and retention efforts. The proposed budget results in a $0.10 decrease in the combined levy for Omaha Public Schools and Educational Service Unit number 19. This significant levy reduction will provide true property tax relief to the patrons of the district, with an $8 million decrease in the combined property tax request for 2024-25 for the four levy funds of the district and for Educational Service Unit number 19. This concludes my presentation this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed budget to you. Before moving on to any questions you may have, I would again like to thank three of the finance team's senior members, Ms. Cindy Misrae, Controller, Ms. Kristy Rakovsky, Budget Director, and Mr. Brian Klein, Financial Planning and Analysis Manager. This budget would not be possible without their leadership and the tireless efforts by them and their dedicated staff. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. And actually, we'll go ahead and do board questions during the presentation at the regular board meetings, since the purpose of the budget hearing is just to receive public feedback. Just for the public's information, the rest of this meeting will go in essentially three separate hearings. You might realize that we're actually supposed to be, for the last two years, we've done the pink postcard hearing to hear the district's property tax request. This year, since we are dropping our property tax request, which is a great thing and didn't have to do the pink postcard hearing, that also means that we were supposed to do our own fourth hearing on the district's property tax request. So since that was not noticed, we'll be doing that at the next board meeting, which also means we won't be voting tonight on the district property tax request portion of the budget. So the, we'll just do the three hearings instead this evening that were noticed. The first one is to hear support, opposition criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers related to the 2024-2025 proposed budget for Douglas County School District 0001. And this will be the first hearing. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Foal.
Aye.
Head.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. And again, the purpose of this first hearing is to hear public support, opposition criticism, suggestions, or observations from taxpayers related to the 2024-2025 proposed budget for Douglas County School District 0001. The first member of the public to be heard is Doug Kagan.
Good evening. Doug Kagan, D O E G K A G A N, 416 South, 130th Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. In examining your budget, we found several positives. The tax levies for the special building fund and capital expenditures will drop. 77% of the general fund revenues, that's a lot, spent on instructional support; only 3% spent on administrative services. And we understand why special education teachers received a 10% bonus because of your staff shortages in this area. Your budget shows that while the district is gaining fewer property tax dollars, your state aid is steadily increasing. In future years, state aid is expected to increase. The countywide valuation in property was once set at, was set at 7.8% instead of the expected 7%, so the increased revenue should earn taxpayers an additional slight property tax levy decrease. This levy is the lowest in 10 years; however, it does not account for spiraling valuation increases. This board and administration should find and implement budget cuts before acquiescing in a 4% levy override, especially as property owners are begging the state for property tax relief. Asking for a hefty levy override defeats the purpose outlined by state legislators for property tax relief, especially as state aid to OPS steadily has increased. So implement immediate budget cuts to offset an amount, any amount of tax levy override requested. End the permanent stipend pay system. Even though OPS may have a difficult time recruiting and retaining teachers and other staff as other school districts, paying additional wages and benefits will not attract prospective employees who simply do not want to work in OPS. The district instead should improve the class disciplinary environment to allow teachers and staff to conduct their professionalism unimpeded. Also note that teacher salaries are rising nationwide anyway. Privatize several of your increasingly expensive operations, for example, custodian and maintenance staff. Make an inter-local transportation agreement with the neighboring school district, and shrink the service routes to those mandated by the state. Finally, we want to thank the superintendent and your chief financial officer for making the budget information and its rationale readily available to us and cooperating with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kagan. And that is the only green sheet that I have for a request to be heard. Is there anyone else in the audience that didn't have a chance to fill out request to be heard form? All right, seeing none, that is, Mr. Kagan's our only speaker, so hearing number one is officially adjourned at 5:39 PM. Moving on to hearing number two. The purpose of this hearing is to hear support, opposition criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers related to the property tax requirements for Education Service Unit number 19 for the 2024-25 fiscal year. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger.
Present.
Foal.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tealyn.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. And again, the purpose of this hearing is to hear support, opposition criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers related to the property tax requirements for Education Service Unit number 19's 2024-2025 fiscal year budget. I don't have any requests to be heard forms filed for this hearing. Is there anyone present who wants to speak who did not get a chance to fill out a form? All right, seeing none. Since we have no speakers, hearing number two is adjourned at 5:41 PM. Moving on to our third budget hearing, the purpose of this hearing is to hear support, opposition criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers related to the 2024-2025 proposed budget for Education Service Unit number 19. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez. Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tealyn.
Present.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger.
Present.
Foal.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. And again, the purpose of this hearing is to hear support, opposition criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers related to the 2024-2025 proposed budget for Education Service Unit number 19. Again, we don't have any requests to be heard from submitted for this budget hearing. Is there anyone present who didn't get a chance to fill out a form and would like to provide feedback on this portion of the budget? All right, seeing none. Hearing number three is adjourned at 5:42 PM. Again, we'd like to thank those in attendance for your comments this evening. The board greatly appreciates your input and your presence at tonight's budget hearings. Let the record reflect that the board budget hearing adjourned at 5:43 PM.